Good evening and welcome to the March 4th, 2024 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening, myself, Chairman Alan Donnelly, Vice Chairman Mr. Carl Hinger is here with us this evening, our Secretary Commissioner Elijah Hewling is here with us this evening, regular member Commissioner Richard Briggs should be here momentarily, alternate Commissioner Mr. Liam Anea is here with us this evening, our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Molly is with us this evening, and our always wonderful and very professional reporting secretary Cassandra Varian is with us this evening. Absent tonight, regular member Commissioner Janet La Forgea and alternate member Commissioner Mr. Larry Rushmeyer.
There he is.
Vote for the record.
Hi there.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call a property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the secretary will read into the record any communications we received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we've gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of the meeting and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints faced upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You're welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the Land Use Office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay, first thing on the agenda, Commissioner Anea, could you please be on Z-24-6118 Pocono Road? And that is the George Gallardo residence, sir.
Yes, sir.
And could you also be on Z-24-810 Forest Trail? And that is the Delafield residence, sir.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda, any correspondence, minutes of other boards and meetings? No, nope, let me do review of minutes first, thank you. All right, I'll take a motion. Liam, do you have, Commissioner Anea, did you review the minutes from last meeting?
I did get it.
Are you comfortable if we had you vote on this, sir?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the January 8, 2024 minutes.
Approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I had a couple things.
I had a couple things, Commissioner Briggs?
Hmm?
Any discussion?
No.
Any discussion?
I had just a little bit.
Okay, on page two, this is line 66, thank goodness you have the line numbers on there, where it says, "There is one prior variance from 2021 on the record for this property for an apartment key." It's kind of saying that it's me, but it wasn't. It was Commissioner Rushmeyer. Also suggests an alternate location for the shed to be built, require post to be installed in offset slope of the land. So that was Commissioner Rushmeyer where the word "key" is, please.
Line 65.
Uh, 65. Next one is page four, line number 184/185. Chairman Donnelly asked for any nominations for chairman, member Hewling nominated Chairman Donnelly for the position, and then Chairman Donnelly asked for a second, Commissioner Briggs seconded Chairman Donnelly's nomination, and then Vice Chairman Hinger seconded his own nomination. I just wanted to add that, and does that sound correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last little bit, next page 505, that's line number 201. It was Commissioner Hewling that seconded Vice Chairman Hinger's nomination, not Secretary La Forgea. I double-checked that in the video. Remember that? Okay. And then on line, this is an add-in, line 217. It's not super important, but I wanted it noted for the record. None of the new members wish to make any amendments to the previously posted schedule. Commissioner Briggs know that he may possibly be absent for the July 1st meeting, but it should not affect the current calendar. Remember that, Commissioner? Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you have a question there? You're good. You're good. Okay. Minutes of other boards and commission, does anybody have any discussion or anything else? I've read them. I don't really see much that pertains to us. I know they're working on, Fran, they're working on the cannabis regulation, but they don't have anything yet.
Correct. Uh, the regulations have been drafted, there's a public hearing, March 28th. Encourage everyone to come out, obviously, and if you're in favor or against, but the commission is looking to open the door for, you know, retail of cannabis.
That's the only thing I noted on there, but you may want to know about. All right, continuing public hearings, there's none. We're going to start with public hearings. The first public hearing is Z-24-6, that is 118 Pocono Road, Mr. George Gallardo residence, and that is, I'm going to read it off here so it's exact, "Present dimension, 48.4 feet, structure to the right sideline, required dimension is 30 feet, proposed dimension is 14 feet 8. The variance requested would be 17 feet," and that is Article 3-5. With the applicant or proponent of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Here, where would you like?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Can I sit or stand? Which do you prefer?
Whichever you're most comfortable with, sir.
Always going to want to sit down at my.
Absolutely.
My name is David Bichelli, I represent George Gallardo regarding the application for 118 Pocono Road.
Address for the record, please, sir.
My address? 468 Corcoran Road, South Perry, Connecticut.
Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals, sir.
Thank you, glad to be here. We filed an application, and prior to filing this application, we looked at the property to see where he can, he wanted to put, change the two-car garage to a three-car garage. So we started the health department to see with the septic system, you know, where they would recommend it. The septic system on this house is behind the house. So the, you know, the hardship we're looking at is there's only really one place to put this addition, it's right where the garage is right now. If you have a copy of the survey, which I can give you little copies if you need one.
We have, I think we have the big and the little.
If you, where they plan on putting it is right on top of the driveway. That, when we went, there's only really one place to put this, and will actually, when they put it there, will decrease or increase the side grass, because we're going to move the driveway over away from the property. At this point, you're, you know, trying to get anywhere else to put this in there wouldn't work. With the way the house is structured, on the other side is the living area, is the dining room and the kitchen, the only place would be was the existing garage where it is right now. We are not increasing the bedrooms, we're keeping the bedrooms at three, excuse me, keeping the bedrooms where they are at three. We're just increasing the garage and the upstairs master bedroom. I've been coming here for a long time, I've been a lawyer for 30 years, and I come down to that stop sign past the police station, and I've never taken a left. I've always taken a right to come here. So, you know, before we started the process, I wanted to see what the area looked like. It's older houses, you know, in that neighborhood down Pocono Road. What he's proposing is consistent with the area, there's a lot of sheds, non-compliance, non-conforming uses that are there right now. I know variants have been granted for other additions, garages and stuff like that, but I feel that what we're proposing fits into the neighborhood where it would be, but it's not something that's not conducive to the area. But I, like I said, when we originally started this process, the only spot we could actually do it was where the existing garage is right now.
Okay. Thank you very, very much, sir.
Thank you. Any questions, sir?
Mr. Secretary, do you have any correspondence or anything for the record?
Two Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Brookfield, regarding variants for 118 Pocono Road. Lee, Marco, A Souza, and Lenizia De Souza are in favor of the variants on 118 Pocono Road. Brookfield, Connecticut, 06804, the variants for Mr. George Gallardo, and they include their cell phone number and signed March 1st, 2024.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. Please, sir. All right, do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant, proponent of the applicant?
I just had a quick one regarding the, regarding the map and the other side, at least on the map, it says that the distance from the other side, it says from the other proposed addition to the border is 28.3 feet.
That's, I'm here, I'm just to let you know, I'm here for that one. This is an existing building permit right now, it's open.
Okay.
They're working on that right now. This is, we're only, that's for this side, this one is a different.
For the right side.
Correct. They're on the right side setback. This one is in the process of being done right now.
And that's the, that's.
That's, yeah, this side, like I said, that's where the driveway, the driveway's going to go this way, and that's the existing driveway right now.
Right.
This one is under construction. That one is under construction as we speak.
Okay, yeah, you don't know if that has a variance or anything, do you? Because at least on this survey map, it looks like it's too close, by about a foot.
About a foot. I, again, I'm not.
It is, and I am, there isn't.
Okay. That's, okay. Just.
When I have to address that, it's another time.
That's, that's fair, I just, I was just sure if that was.
That's a fair question.
Overlooked in this application, or if that was a different.
Well, we're going to address it, we've already spoken through, it's only appliance on that.
We've already been.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was an oversight for this application.
No, but it just goes to approve, that would suggest the commission details that it's only for the right side of the approval.
Okay, fair.
Not.
So I'm not clear on what the hardship is.
Can I approach it, just? This is the, the proposed addition is right here.
Right.
The septic system is right here.
It's right back here.
Yeah, it comes out here and the fields are all here.
Right.
When I went next door and talked to the health department, they, you know, we, we have, I have a copy, actually, I think I have a copy that wasn't submitted of the septic system, but it goes right here. This is where the garage is right now, and our base is this way. As the proposed addition is going to come this way. So we're actually taking this driveway and creating more space in between the neighborhood, yes, but that, we had no other place to put it.
Mr. Secretary, this is your septic asphalt from the town.
Correct.
If that would help you at all, would you like to show?
I actually have a clear one, I believe, in here somewhere.
I see.
If you can decipher that.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I was curious to ask about the drainage from this side of the proposed addition, because it seems like the driveway for 120 Pocono is kind of close.
It goes all the way, I believe it goes all the way in the back. If I can, person who designed it is here, Melvin Ewan, you want to talk about the drainage at all?
If it would help, and you gave his permission, I could bring it up on Google Earth, sir.
If, yeah, that would be great.
Would you like that?
Yes. Okay. Just to clarify the question, you're asking which, their driveway goes right here.
Yeah.
This is, we're going to increase this drive, this driveway is going to go over here. So if any grading is requested or something like that in order to do it, that's what my client does, so I don't think it'd be even an issue to do that, but I believe it's pretty flat at that area, I don't know if you've seen the area, but it's pretty flat.
Okay, I thought, it seemed like there was a slight slope downward, I'm worried about, you know, if you have some water going into the driveway here and if it's.
Right now, it's grading down? It's grading this way, you're saying?
Just a little bit.
Um, we're moving the driveway over here, so grading this, regrading it, if it's, you know, concerned, we can always grade it that way.
What about from the gutter on the addition?
Um, I don't see, on the gutters, if I may ask, the gutters are going to go down towards the road, the drainage?
Oh, I can make the driveway well, whatever, just a little.
I mean, we can, if it's, or it's not built, so we can always put the drainage where it's, it's not, I believe now it comes right into the driveway.
Okay.
The gutters come right down and it flows right down the driveway.
Okay, thank you.
So the hardship question goes from the space available, right? Because you can't move it where the, obviously, the septic system is, to the question of, is it a hardship to have a two versus a three-car garage? Is that the question?
That was what I was just about to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah. You ready, Don? I have a couple of questions. You have any questions?
Can I address that?
Yep.
If I may.
Absolutely, sir.
I mean, in the area, like I said, going through that whole area, the properties are, and if you can see the picture of it, that's not as dated as some of the other ones. But if you were to do that, it would be along the lines of other variances that have done in that area. The hardship, if you're going to go in and do, put it anywhere, that's what it would be. But these are dated, you know, the houses are dated, and I would like to say that it's, it does run in line, I mean, the purpose of the variances are so that somebody can do something to their property outside of the scope of the 30-foot setback. I believe the hardship is that we have nowhere else to even consider it, you know, to do any type of work like that on the house.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
No, I guess, I mean, I have a question, but not, just a, just a question among ourselves about hardships, and Commissioner Rushmeyer is in my head.
My, my head too, I was kind of hoping to be here tonight.
That's not for anybody else to worry about, so.
I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Sure.
The septic asphalt, that is the septic asphalt, I'm going to ask you to come forward in just a second and just take a look at the map I drew. I had the septic asphalt transferred over to this, this site map right here, as best as it could be done by Mr. Avery, our sanitarium.
Okay.
So I just wanted you to look at it, verify it, and let me know if this is okay. Okay, so this, this is the septic asphalt from the town, and I haven't helped me because I could kind of only guess it, but it takes, you have about 15, 6 feet over here, then you've got the tank, they really only labeled it, it was like 1, 2, 3 here, then there's a D-box here, and then there's a field right over here, that's number 3. And then the possibility behind the fields might be a reserve.
Yeah, if you had to do something else, correct.
So this looks fairly, fairly accurate right here?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, and then what Commissioner Anea was talking about, I did see the slight downhill slope, it was everywhere, basically the whole right side of the property or the kind of north side of the property?
Correct.
Is that?
It goes this way, yes, correct.
Okay.
And there's, yeah, there's a house, a residence back here.
All right.
There's a driveway that goes all the way back.
Thank you very much. All right, so the proposed addition is 36 by 32, which is roughly, and if my numbers are off, just let me know here, sir. 36 by 32, it's roughly 1,152 square feet, times two floors, that'd be about 2,304 square feet, give or take.
Yes.
Okay, if you squared it up. Why not just make the addition 32 by 15, 4, or which equals 16, 8, and 30, so 36 by 16, 8, which would give you 604.8 square feet of floor, which would give you a total of 1,209.4, and you wouldn't need a variance at all. In other words, why not just make it, you know, is it possible to make the garage fit within the setbacks with those numbers that I had?
I, I'm going to defer to the individual, Melvin Ewan. On that, as far as I, the numbers go, a three-car garage, I don't think would be able to fit in something like that.
No.
You know, if you're, if the, the whole.
The rough square foot, it's roughly 1,152 to 604.8.
Yeah, it wouldn't fit, like, to do that. I mean, the point is to turn, the addition was to turn actually the garage.
Okay.
But to make it a three-car garage, I don't think that would even work.
Okay, you could, you could do it, but you'd have to make the entrance to the garage where it currently is, because the 36-foot width would give you enough width for three cars, and then if you had, if your other dimension, you'd have to have it probably more than 16 feet if you wanted it, depends on the vehicle size.
Yeah, that might be an oversized two or something, rather than, rather than a three. Okay, the, the next question I have for you, sir, is the addition that's being built and processed, built, is, was approximately a year ago, it's permit number B-2-3-9, that was a 16 by 32 addition. There was no variance needed, obviously you planned it out, the architects did it, and there was no variance needed on that. Why, and this gets to the hardship, which you have written down as a septic here, could you explain that septic system hardship in detail and how it's not really a self-imposed hardship? You know the law and what we have to follow under some board of appeals, sir. You're, you're asking me, why is a hardship? Well, the septic system is, what you have is a hardship, we know where the septic system is and where you might possibly have to add on, which is the back of the house. But in building it, you were able to build, they were able, less than a year ago, build an addition to the left, to the promenade hall, there was no variance, I did double-check with Amy at the town, there was no variance needed for that, I'm not sure what's going on with what they spoke about for. But why weren't, and I understand size-wise you were able to do it, but why weren't you able to do this without it, and how is the, how is it not a self-imposed hardship? In other words, like, you knew the septic system was there already.
Well, we had, it's, we can't move the septic system, that, that's the hardship, because we can't move the existing septic system where we don't have to do it.
Right.
So in order to, to get that to where we want it to, the only spot we could do it is in that one area. That's it, you're, when you spoke about the left side of the house, that wasn't, that wasn't the garage, so the, the size didn't matter in that point, that wasn't somewhere, they could do it within the setback. On this side, it's different. The only way we can fit that in there is if.
You make it bigger.
We grant the variance.
You make it bigger, so you can get the third car in there.
Correct.
Basically.
And, and if, if I may, we, the neighbors and everybody are involved, but us turning it too also helps the fact that the trucks aren't parked there, the light's not going into the neighbor's yard, I mean, the, the neighbors were for it, put it that way.
Got you. Okay, last, last question, you might be able to answer this, Mr. Gallardo, and I know him being nitpicking on this, you had 17-foot on a variance, shouldn't it be 15, 4, or are you just asking for more than you need?
We, I could, do you mind if I answer that? We rounded it to that, we could put the exact number in there, but when we were putting the numbers, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't an inch or two over.
I got you. 15, 4 is really what you need, but you're asking for 17.
Correct. Correct, and I, I didn't, if, if you'd like us to put that exact number in there, I'd be more than happy to do it, I just don't want to have any issues.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have any follow-ups? Hmm? Pretty good? Pretty good? All right, at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none. At this time, would you like to speak, sir? Absolutely. Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Would you like my chair?
No. Last time? Melvin A. Wayne.
Building Design Board of Appeals, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, your address for the record, please.
17 Connecticut Avenue, Denbury, Connecticut, 06810. Building designer, expediter. Yes, for the, the design, as has been acknowledged by the neighbors, they all are in support of our plans, and for what my client wants, and the only spot we really have is where we have it located, orienting the entry straight up, like the attorney rightfully pointed out, the floodlights, when they come on at night, now, where we are, we are going to reorient it, the entry, we want, we respect the neighbors, their privacy, that's one thing, and we want to be good neighbors, and we have more green, we're conscious of more green land, and.
Do you mind if I follow up on a question with you, sir? That, the driveway, I don't know if it's up here or not, but the driveway that you have now is not going to stay, and then the new addition would just basically take over like where the parking area is now?
No.
No, they're going to, can I approach?
Absolutely. I'm going to have it up here in just a second, I think. Okay. I can move them out if you want.
Just see where that, yeah, where that car is.
Okay.
It's going to go, it's going to go more over to where that red car is, correct?
Correct.
It's going to move over, they're going to.
So he's going to put a new driveway?
Yes. Yeah, so.
So this edge will be here already, and it'll just be widened?
No, 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 they're going to, they're going to take that up and block it, get a new, for a new driveway, he's going to put a new driveway in, and move it over, so.
All green.
And you can't curb it, regarding your concern with the gutters, we could always curb it, so that the water would drain directly down into, you know, the road, if that's, you know, if that's what the commission wants.
Yeah, I can add a point, the contractor, the owner, who's also a contractor, and this is Forte, you can use Forte, is going to build a standard driveway to take care of any excess water. Yeah, he's very diligent, and his record proves for itself, if you go to his side, you can go to his side, right, see what he does, he's very.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application?
I would, but I'm already spoken.
We know you're in favor, sir. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. All right, I'd like to take a motion to, anybody have any last minute questions? Anything last minute?
I have the last.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, sir, do you have a final concluding remarks?
My only remarks are that I, as I said earlier, I know there's the law regarding showing a hardship, but also there's, there's a reason they have you guys here for variance purposes. I believe that what we've proposed, and based on the septic system, and it'd fit in with the harmony of the neighborhood, you know, our final product that they want to do, and, you know, other than that, we'd have no other place to put it, you know, if you wanted to do that work, and like I said, the way it's going to be constructed, I think it's a benefit to both, both of the neighbors and everybody else in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have any final concluding remarks, sir?
No, thank you.
No, thank you, okay. Thank you very much, sir. All right. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to close Z-24-6 Gallardo Residence application.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to application number two. I will take a motion to approve Z-24-8, that's James and Christina Delafield residence, 10 Forest Trail.
We don't need a, we don't need a motion approved.
No, okay.
This is, we're opening discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
That's, that's later.
Thank you. All right, next, next on the agenda is Z-24-8, James and Christina.
Skip it.
Could the applicant, or proponent of the applicant, please come forward and tell us about your appeal in detail. Thank you.
Is he here?
No, he's here. I don't see anybody here.
Do you wanna, uh, just, uh, table it, have a continuance?
Yeah. You know what, can I, they sit in the room.
Is he over there?
I have no idea, I don't know who you're talking about.
Do you wanna check?
The point is, is-
I don't know who I'm looking for.
I met the father, but I think the son's coming, I have no idea.
I have no idea who I'm looking for.
I actually sat in there by accident too, so, you're in the right room, but-
We don't know who we're looking for, though. There's a lot of people over there.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna yell.
Yeah.
All right. I, I've done it in court, I'll go over for you, I'll be asked. I will take a motion.
Go ahead.
What's the person's name? Do you want it? Do you want me to?
Delafield.
It's James and Christina Delafield. No, I'll, I'll remember that part.
I'll let him do it. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
First elector, we're gonna go-
This isn't the month I-
Who sent you over here?
Yeah, I'm not getting involved in this, it's gonna come in.
Maybe they are.
Maybe they are.
We do have Mr. Delafield, he won't come back to borrow.
I don't think we need to call him.
Yeah, they gotta be, there's gotta be.
We just table it. Kinda like, you kinda have to know, though, right? Once people start talking about things completely unrelated to zoning, you'd be like, wait a minute. Maybe. You never know.
We'll give him a minute.
Well, you can table, you can go into deliberations.
We could table, we could do that, and then if he shows up, we can come back to it, right?
Exactly.
Maybe we have to send somebody out to look for attorney to say, uh-
All right, I'll take a motion, I'll take a motion to, for right now, table Z dash twenty-four dash eight.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, deliberations. Um, we're gonna open deliberations on, and I'll take a motion to approve Z dash twenty-four dash six, Galaharto Residence.
Yep, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second? Okay, discussion.
Well, I, I think, uh-
I wanted a follow-up on what-
I think Richard and I are thinking the same thing-
Yeah.
Since you mentioned, uh, Larry, Larry's thoughts from, uh, previously.
Yeah, this is one of these situations where, um, you know, it's a reasonable request, and you can understand why, um, it has appeal, and even the, in some ways, it might improve the situation in, in the immediate sense for the neighbors because of the repositioning of things, yet it is more a personal hardship, it seems to me, than a hardship of the land, and I guess, you know, in that you could, you could put a two-car garage there, or I guess if you really wanted to go to trouble, you could move the septic system-
Yeah.
Uh, which would be obviously not a big additional expense, but, but it could be done, so, it's tough.
That's exactly, exactly where I was having, it seems, it seems self-imposed, and I read the laws I spoke to the attorney about, um, on self-imposed hardships, and it just kinda seems that way to me, but I wanted to hear everybody else's thoughts on it. Commissioner Aneah?
I have the same feeling, um, you know, whether it's a, a two-car garage or a three-car garage, it doesn't seem like it's something that's-
Of the land.
Of the land, necessarily, even though I, I do think the, the concern about the location of the septic system is genuine. Um, I think I'm a little more inclined, um, to give the variance, although I do recognize the issues that you guys brought up, and Larry. Uh, just for me, I, I think that it's not, uh, I, I mean, I guess I could put the hardship on the septic, it's low, that's kind of what my main issue is, is not really sure how much of a hardship I can call the septic being where it is. Um, and like we said, just, you can use a two-car garage, you don't have to have a three-car garage. I do understand that there's, uh, and when I did the visit, there are trucks parked in the driveway, I mean, there were two or three trucks parked in the driveway, so that may be a nuisance to neighbors, and neighbors may prefer a three-car garage to get those vehicles out of the driveway, and if you're coming home late at night, and you have those bright lights and, and floodlights like they were discussing, um, but I think overall, I'd probably lean towards you guys, I'm just not, not fully there yet.
That's a nice jump.
Well, to what Elijah was saying, um, I, I definitely see the arguments for there being, uh, potential benefits to the change, but those benefits, like, uh, there being too many cars in the driveway right now, are all particular to, uh, the current property owner, and the, uh, you know, as we all know, this, uh, variance stays with the land-
For a moment.
-in perpetuity, and we can't surmise that because the person who currently owns the property has a lot of cars that require, that end up filling the driveway, that the next owner and the owner after that will always have that be the case. This is more of an issue for this particular person who wants a bigger garage because they happen to have a lot of vehicles, and that's not so much, uh, a reason to grant a variance.
I concur. Commissioner Rice?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's, uh, I mean, obviously, at some level, one takes into consideration, I guess, not, not entirely strictly the, you know, the, or, or there's some room, I guess, for, for interpretation about what a hardship is, but, um, it's a fairly big variance requested in terms of the, and, um, one could imagine that if someone else were to move into the adjacent property behind, they might-
Oh, the same thing.
Feel, you know, intruded on by the, you know, by the fourteen-foot, um, distance, so, um, you know, I mean, I would probably reluctantly, uh, decline of that application, with some reluctance, but, um, it seems, that would be the more consistent position to take, I guess. And I wasn't clear, is it, was it, I maybe should've asked this, is it your sense that the septic system cannot be moved, or it's simply that it would be a big undertaking to move it? There's reserved space.
Yeah, there's reserve, I mean, I went out, we looked at the property, um, and, I mean, there's tons of room back there, there's tons of room for reserve. If it had to be moved, I guess it could be moved. It's a big backyard. Um, I also remember something from, I wish Commissioner Rushmeyer was here, but you can, at least tank-wise, you can get up pretty doggone close to, like, where the tanks are when you're building and stuff like, you, obviously, you can't get close to the fields.
Leaching fields.
Yeah, there's, is it seventy-five feet, I think?
Yeah, seventy.
Yeah, seventy-five feet radius, not leaching fields, but like, the tank and stuff, I mean, you can go back pretty doggone close to that, as long as they have access to come in and pump it out and stuff. So, I, I think there's, I think there's options.
Well, it might be possible to, uh, move the tank and keep the leaching fields, potentially.
Yeah, and as I looked, as I looked at it, and this was drawn on here by the town's sanitarium. So, the tank is right here, so it's fifteen-six back, that's his tank, um, I didn't have, we'd have to look at this to try to get the distance here, but then it came out, and then there's a fifty-foot field right there. Uh, I'm guessing that's gotta be, probably maybe about fifteen feet right there, comes out, fifteen feet, that is a field. And you can build pretty doggone, if you, you know, went backwards, you, you could, there's some, there's some wiggle room, they just can't, you have to figure out where the seventy-five-foot radius is, and the field, the sanitarium would have to figure that out.
Right.
I mean, there's also the possibility of, uh, like you said, whether it's moving backwards or there's even room to build a little bit, uh-
Forward.
Forward, i- if the three-car garage is absolutely what the applicant needs, there are, I think, ways to manage it within the lines, so long as the cars continue to, uh, leave.
I've been to lots, I've been to lots of houses where they have a, a car, and then another car coming behind them, because they're really long.
Yeah, but I, I'm just saying that the, the reason is-
Send it out this way.
That you could have-
The entrance here.
Yeah, you could have the, uh, cars just, uh, exit the garage in the same direction they do currently, instead of towards the road, and at that matter, it is really just a matter of convenience, talking about, like, uh, possible, you know, light pollution and whatnot, but I think that's, the, then it gets even more flimsy to agree with it.
You probably still need a variance.
Need a much, much less.
Smaller one.
Yeah, depending on where they're at there. They wouldn't need seventeen feet.
Right, I mean, if this is approximately, if this is thirty-two, this looks like maybe a third of that.
Well, there, I mean, it's whatever their dimension is minus what their ask is, so if they're, um, and if they're asking for seventeen, and it's, uh, thirty, you'd expect it to be about thirteen, fourteen feet.
Yeah, right.
That's within the setback.
The proposed was fourteen-eight.
Yeah, so, so you'd expect, you have fourteen-ish feet, and that should be enough, I believe. Or, or at the very least, you could get away with a much lesser variance.
Mm-hmm.
Anything further?
I mean, the light, the, the, the light issue is, seems to me that's entirely discretionary.
Right.
You have lights or not, or you can position them wherever you want.
Right, you don't need a floodlight there, you could have trees or bushes up, if your neighbor complains, your neighbor could put up trees and bushes if they don't want the light moving.
And the drainage issue Commissioner Aneah brought up, that's, the, the guy that's building it and doing the driveway's gotta take care of the drainage. I'm sure that's gonna get inspected by the town.
Right.
I don't think that's an issue for us right now. Okay. Anything further?
I don't think so, I think it's, it's just the, uh, the nature of the hardship, and that I, I feel that it's not exactly related to the way that the, that the land lies in there.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Everybody ready to vote?
No.
All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-four dash six, that is the George Galaharto Residence, that is one eighteen Pocono Road, Brookfield, Connecticut, and that was for a seventeen-foot variance through right sideline, Article three dot five, say aye? All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion fails. Zero, two, five. Thank you very much, sir. Doesn't look like they're coming over from next door, huh?
If they're there.
If they're there. Let me try it, right, Fran?
Yeah. We don't want to go for any time.
Yes, yeah, the correspondence already been put in the record, right, Fran?
Yes.
Okay, it's been written in the record. Thank you. All right, so, um, you wanna continue that? I'll take a motion to continue.
We already tabled that. We, we tabled it before.
So, we don't have to continue it? It's already gonna be continued?
We weren't to continue it to the next meeting?
So, make a motion for it?
Make a motion to continue to the next meeting because the applicant is unpresent.
Absolutely. I'll take a, I'll take a motion to continue Z dash twenty-four dash eight, that's the Delafield Residence, ten Forest Trail, to continue to the next meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Old business, I have none, new business, I have none. Tabled items, none, informal discussion, update Commissioner Training, Secretary Huling, is there anything on the Commissioner Training?
I just wrote, great job, everyone.
We, I think we were the first, you were the first.
Yeah, let's read it in the record.
We're all proud of it. Uh, to Board of Selectmen, yeah, from Alan Donnelly, subject Commissioner Training requirements, this is to affirm that the following commissioners have successfully completed the training as required pursuant to CGS eight dash four C, Alan Donnelly, Carl Inger, Elijah Huling, Janet Forja, Richard Briggs, Larry Rushmeyer, this was as of February sixth, please be advised that alternate member Liam Aneah has until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. To finish the required training due to his appointment date attached, you'll find a copy of the training status spreadsheet kept by the Laney's office for tracking. Alan Donnelly. Again, that was February sixth, Liam.
There actually was a note letter, which I didn't get a copy of, exactly the same letter as that, but it states that Commissioner Aneah has finished his training.
I think we got an email from-
Did you guys get the email?
Yeah, well, I think we got an email from, uh-
Amy.
Okay.
Amy, and I think Bob Felden emailed and congratulated us.